2022, today's invocation will be given by Pastor Carlton Sharp of the Faith Christian Center Church. Could everyone please silence your cell phone? If you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the pledge to the nation's flag.
Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come thanking you for this day that you've made. Father, we rejoice and we're glad in it. Father, we thank you for your new mercy today. And you've demonstrated your faithfulness to us by allowing us to be here. Father, you instructed us to pray for those in authority for us, over us, God, so we come now so that we can live a quiet and peaceful life, and we pray for this council. Father, we thank you for our mayor, and we thank you for traveling grace for her as she makes her way back to her home. Father, we thank you for each and every one of the councilmen today, and Father, we thank you for their service to our city. Then, Father, I pray right now, in the name of Jesus, that you would give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as they make decisions that affect our lives here in this city. Father, I pray that each and every one of the council will value and respect each other's perspective and will be civil in their response to each other. Father, in the name of Jesus, I pray that this council will be an example of civil discourse in our city. Father, you said that if we would trust you with all of our heart and lean not to our own understanding and all our ways acknowledge you, you shall direct our path. And so, Father, I pray that you would direct the path of this council in the name of Jesus. Father, we pray for the staff, and we thank you for them. And, Father, we thank you that they are appreciated for the work that they do in our city. Father, I pray now that you would bless our city and let it be known as a city of unity, Father. And, Father, we would forever give your name the praise, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Mutant absent, Mayor Protim Dureo.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neil absent.
The discussion scheduled for today for the ad hoc committee will be postponed to a later date. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Jolynn Watson versus Derek Janischk, Cause Number D-0209945. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda and Item 1 through 3. Please complete a green slip and hand it to the city clerk. The city clerk will call your name when it is time to speak, and we would appreciate it if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
I don't have any, Mayor Protim.
Mr. Manager, could we have the first item? Consent agenda.
I so move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried. Mr. Manager, can we have the first item, please?
Yes, Mayor Protim. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, thank you, very good. Regular agenda item number one is to consider an ordinance amended in a fiscal year 2022 budget. Typically, a city, once you go through the budget year, there's a lot of housekeeping items, so to speak, that you have to take care of to put the budget in a shape or position of balancing or whatever by the end of the year. So what we have in accordance with Article 6 of the City Charter, the city manager shall strictly enforce the provisions of the budget specified in the ordinance adopted in the budget. He shall not authorize or approve any expenditure unless an appropriation has been made in the budget ordinance adopting the budget. And there is an available unencumbered balance of the appropriations sufficient to pay the liability to be incurred. Approving the proposed amendments will ensure the expenditures are within the approved budget and that inter-fund transfers are in accordance with financial policies as approved within the budget document. We'll have Chief Financial Officer Todd Semino, and Todd will be able to take us through this item.
Counsel, as you're aware, we do this at the end of every year. I think most of y'all have been through this process before, but I've laid out the details of all the amendments within the agenda memo, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
No comment, nobody have any questions or discussion on this? Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
Yes, the general liability fund. By any chance, do we know what departments are somewhat leading in reference to some of the liabilities we have as far as recs and things of that magnitude? Either staff or Sheree or...
Are you looking from a particular department or...?
Yeah, well, I'm talking about the liability issues we have as far as like recs and things like that. Do we know like which departments are kind of at the top?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, if it's possible.
Solid waste is a front runner, followed by police, and then water.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is because it's like, you know, preventative measures, that's a big concern of mine, and I just want to make sure we trying to do everything we can in preventative measures to move forward, because right now, with financing the budget, we want to be as strategic as we can on savings. So I want to know if, you know, we address those things.
So my office does have a liability administrator. She's currently working to become certified to be able to teach defensive driving to our CDL drivers when they're involved in accidents, which would be mostly in the solid waste and streets departments, they drive our larger vehicles. But that would also apply to any employee who drives for the city so that we can kind of counteract some of those those issues, a lot of the incidences that are that we face is that you're just not following safety protocols. So that'll, after she has that training, we can reinforce some of those safety protocols to kind of reduce the cost. And as council is aware, everything has kind of gone up. And so those accidents add up quickly when we encounter property damage. And so we're looking to, you know, kind of strategically attack some of those issues involving just making sure that they put the arm down for trash cans and making sure they're using backers when they back up to avoid some of those reoccurring accidents.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protim. You know, Councilmember Turner just kind of stole my thunder on that last one you did, but some of these accidents involving our trash department are backing accidents. And, you know, you mentioned spotters. With the machinery and everything, can they hear if they're getting too close to a car? If they have a spotter, would cameras help or...?
In fairness, their biggest, their biggest problem is forgetting to put the trash arm down. So it's not really a backing accident. That was hard to admit. But in the backing situation, our vehicle's back, but it's not beeping like our car beeps when we get close to something. That's not the mechanism that they use. It just beeps to alert the public. So if there was a car behind them and they heard that beep, they would alert to back up or to blow their horn. What the spotter does, because they're in those large trucks, is to help, you know, A, notify them when they're getting too close, but also to keep, you know, their surrounding areas clear as well. So the spotter is still very important, both for trash and for any of our trucks. It's just, you know, because there's so much equipment, the trucks are bigger. With any situation, they're required whenever they're backing to use a spotter.
Would a warning, an audible warning, like when my beeping sound in my car saves me from backing into something, or a camera, would any of those things help to prevent those type of accidents?
Sure, it would also offer a preventative measure.
Okay, maybe that's something we can look at and see if, how expensive those are and something that we can investigate.
Okay.
Thank you. Sheree, I don't know if you can answer this question, but you seem to be the one that we're all looking at today for this. But we all know that many of the accidents we have is our garbage pickup backing up, as you said. They're doing a phenomenal job. I think we've got great service here in Beaumont. But you mentioned a spotter. I don't, that means there has to be two people on every truck.
Every truck has like a crew. They ride with their crew. And our garbage trucks, there's someone who works the truck, but there's also somebody who's riding on the back of that truck to get the cans or get any heavy trash to throw in. So they're already equipped for that, that's already a part of their plan.
Because I don't always see that with the truck that comes down my street. And so is it because we're short-staffed or...? In fact, because I am sensitive to this issue, because I am concerned about the number of accidents we have with garbage pickup. And so I pay attention, and when I see the truck come down my street, unless I'm overlooking, I only see one person, the driver.
So in terms of staffing, that obviously would be a better question from our personnel director or for Benji, since they work, you know, directly with that area. But for the most part, it is a city protocol. If they're backing, they should have a spotter. So whether or not that's being done is...
And that's why I said you may not be able to answer this question. But it's just, I brought it up because I just, I don't see, at least on my street, I don't see the spotter. And I just...
And it could be a matter of routes. If, you know...
Maybe that route doesn't require...
If that route doesn't require them to back, because they can get through the neighborhood without having to back up. That may be something to consider, but if they're backing or if they have a backing situation, they're supposed to use a spotter.
Okay, thank you.
Sheree, those automated trash trucks, I mean, I've seen them for years, they never have two people on them. The ones where the arm comes up and picks the garbage can up and dump it, it's a one-person operation. Now, the heavy trash truck, they have two folks on it, but the automated ones, it's just a, it's a one-person.
Again, I think it depends on their route, because if they're supposed to back, the city protocol does require them to have a spotter. So if their route doesn't, we do have some streets that don't allow for...
Call the sack or something like that.
Yeah, it doesn't allow for a full turnaround, and so they have to back out. And so if they're backing, they need a spotter.
Yeah, and there are times that they also have another truck following. So it depends on the area.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just me, that's the reason I asked, is because just looking at the numbers and the data, we can say is average dismount every year, but, you know, I just want to look at preventative measures and what we can do to try to get that money down and see what we can save, what we can't save. So that's why I was asking, as far as the recs, like, you know, I know you mentioned you have staff working on some things, but like I think it's a problem that we can really focus on and see how we can get that number down and see if we can allocate funds from transferring somewhere else.
So the number of accidents in general aren't necessarily up, it is the cost to repair some of the items. So our cost to fix some of the things, and, you know, an accident that, you know, to repair a fence two years ago cost us probably, you know, in the range of seventy thousand. This year costs closer to ninety, almost a hundred and twenty thousand to repair a line of fences. So it just, the cost to do the work is more.
Todd, can you take me through Item 5 on the municipal transit fund and break down for us how much it's costing us to run the municipal transit fund this year and where those revenues are coming from?
Sure. Before I do, just want to confirm that on all of our garbage trucks, we do have backup cameras. And on the garbage trucks, those are typically ran with just one person, because everything's fully automated. Now, when we do heavy trash and other pickups, they'll have more than one person. But on the municipal transit fund, if you're just looking at operational costs, not including the years when we go out and buy buses or do other capital improvements, it's typically five to five and a half million a year.
Okay, I'm looking at this thirteen million dollar figure, and what are we looking at here?
The reason why it's so large this year is because we bought, I believe, six transit buses and maybe seven paratransit.
Eight total. Okay.
And the majority of that's funded by the federal government on those bus purchases.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You have something, Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor Protim. I just wanted to add a little bit about the solid waste and some of the accidents. Typical, practically, solid waste typically leads in accidents. You know, there's more motion, there's more weaving, there are arms moving, you know, there are mailboxes that they hit. Two things I do is when I go to a city, I get in a trash truck and ride with them. And I get in the police car and ride with them. And you typically think the police are going to have more accidents, but it's really the solid waste because they operate in some conditions, tight spots that you wouldn't believe with some really big, large equipment. Probably, and Benji does a great job, but I would recommend at some point that we go out and audit those routes to make sure that they're safe and the things that are out there. You typically want to audit your routes and have somebody look at them, identify the problems for the drivers, and then it helps that driver and whoever, whether it's that regular driver or sometimes you have a substitute driver out there on that route, taking care of things like that. But it's common to have accidents, you want to minimize them. What Todd said about cameras, it's commonplace for the new equipment to have backup cameras. You know, it's just if you want to spend the money for them, you know, a lot of times it's an option. A lot of trucks now, it's not an option, they come with them because of the liability. But we can make sure that we have the cameras on the trucks, we can audit those routes for safe, for safety, and make sure that they're in a better shape. But solid waste is a tough one. I've gotten those big trucks, and I commend the drivers on them.
And Todd, on Number 4, the output fund, I noticed it stating the flight simulators that we purchased, but it is possible that simulator can help us initially get a return on that investment from when it was explained to us prior to us purchasing it, correct?
That's correct. I believe the break even for the flight simulator was between two to three years. So after two to three years, it will have paid for itself, then be a profit center for the airport.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure the community understood that's one that we actually would get a, could return on our investment.
Correct.
Okay.
Todd, is it already in use, the simulator?
It is already in use, and I believe Lamar University is using it as well for their students.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Pose. Motion carries. Next one, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protim Dureo. Item 2 is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute change order number 1 to the contract with Alco LLC for the Colliers Ferry Pump Station project. We have a representative, Bart's not here today, but there's someone here to answer any questions you might have. This is basically a project where it's a change order on the relocation of some electrical ductwork, and we have to get that done as a part of the project.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Move for approval. Second.
Second. Any discussion? No questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Mr. Manager, the next item, please.
Okay. Mayor Protim is to consider approving the write-off of uncollectible delinquent accounts. This is, I think this is an annual activity by the city on the uncollectible delinquent accounts. It's another typical activity of a city. It's not that we will stop trying to collect that amount, but it becomes a liability on our books when it's looked at. So Todd can surely add more than I can and what the city of Beaumont does, but it's a typical activity for a city.
Okay. Can I have a motion for approval, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Turner?
Todd, can you kind of explain to the community so they got a better understanding of why some of these items can become uncollectible?
So typically, this is a year-end process when we get ready to audit our financial statements from an external auditor. And what they look at is the aging of our receivables. And once they typically get beyond a year or more, they want us to write them off for external financial reporting purposes. But as the memo states, that doesn't mean we stop our efforts. We're just clearing our books for the audit presentation.
Any other questions? Todd, would it be, is it possible, or do any other municipalities actually publicly post the name of the folks that owe them money, owe the cities money?
It's not a requirement, I don't know of anyone that does that. Also, a lot of this, or the majority of this, is EMS-related, so you'd be violating HIPAA if you tried to do something like that and specifically tied it to EMS. That's why we give you the detail of the amounts, but we don't tell you which category it falls into.
Okay, all right.
And I know that some people, when it says deceased, like they passed away, like normally, is that kind of standard? It doesn't pass off to family member or heir, it kind of just falls off the books?
If they're deceased, that might be more of a legal question, I'm not really sure what the answer is on that.
Back to me. So when someone dies, their estate inherits their assets and their debts. However, you know, the city doesn't have a policy where we typically go after people's estates, their debts. So if someone's responsible, they'll pay off the lien. Most time, if it's a lien on the property or whatever, and they want to sell that asset, they pay it off, but not so much for ambulance fees or, you know, past water debt or something like that. So those are typically costed up sore, but the city does notify the estate that there is a balance or amount owed, and it's on, you know, responsibility of the state to kind of settle those debts. But, you know...
And just so all of council is aware and the citizens, we do place liens on certain collectibles. We do it in demolition for commercial property, but we don't do it for residential property. We also assess liens for the weed abatement charges if they're occurring on their property taxes. If their property taxes that are due on the property are more than what the lien's worth, then obviously we don't file a lien on those. But we do lien properties when we can.
Since we did this last year, any other accounts that we wrote off that we, where we, have we been able to collect on them since then?
I'd have to go back and get some type of report to verify that, that's not something we normally look at. We just look at it at the end of the year and see what needs to be written off for financial presentation purposes.
Okay. Any other question?
Todd, just for my personal, just curious, it caught my eye, and I would never mention any names, but there's a number of churches on here. What category does a church fall in? Is it weed abatement or general nuisance?
So the general nuisance is...
Can you give me an example?
Yeah, the general nuisance is typically litter. But we have seen demolition liens for churches, we have seen weed abatement liens for churches. So those are probably typical of what's going to be in that area. It won't be obviously EMS, but it would be demolition and weed.
Well, I just was curious, and I'd like to make it clear that my church is not on there. I saw you over the canal.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye. Pose. Mr. Manager, can we open up the public hearing on 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report?
Yes, I'll read the item, Mayor Protim, and then you'll open up, open, have the hearing and close it. But it's just received the comments, as you said, on the 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is a CAPER. This item was put together by Chris Boone, and Chris can address any questions you might have.
Do I have any public comment on it?
William Johnson, 1045 Madison Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City. My name is William Johnson, 1045 Madison Street, Beaumont, Texas. And I've been eating out of this building, dealing with my water bill. I found out early this year, after talking to the ladies at the office over there, that I could get...
Excuse me, Mr. Williams. This is a public comment on the CAPER report. If you need to speak about your water bill, you can do that at the end of the meeting at the public comment then.
Oh, I thought this was public...
No, you checked public hearing, you want to speak during the public comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I got the wrong tip?
Yes, that's okay.
I'll call you back up hopefully in just a few minutes.
Other than that, I have no one else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council, any questions? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, anyone who wants to come up, any citizen who wishes to speak, now is the time for you to come up and speak about whatever you want to talk about. Do you have anything, Mr. Williams?
William Johnson, 1045 Madison Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
I told you it wouldn't be that long.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, City of Beaumont, my name is William Johnson, I live at 1045 Madison Street, Beaumont, Texas. I'm here to speak about my water bill pertaining to my age. I found out a few months back that I was entitled to a senior citizen discount. And I got it for a month or so, one bill came in at forty-eight, one at sixty, and the last week, the bill came in at seventy-seven dollars. I want to know where all this water going. Now, away by my post office box this past Tuesday, no, this past Monday, I got another bill out of my mailbox, and it says that I owe eighty-something, eighty-two dollars and some cents. That's due on the 10th and the 6th of the night. Now, I'm here today, and I've been talking to y'all people across the street about this. I don't even see how I could be owing eighty-something dollars for water that hasn't even posted yet. I got a bill due on the 10th and the 6th for eighty-something dollars. I just paid a bill for seventy-seven dollars and some cent on the 9th and the 6th. And I got another bill in my mailbox, I'm looking for help. That's all I'm here to ask you all to look into this. Thank you.
I have a Robert, no last name and no address.
Just a reminder, I may have not said it, please remember to try and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Good afternoon, evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Benoit, I live at Summer Street in Beaumont, Texas. And I'm concerned about the police officers kicking my door in thirty-five times, twice a night, for really no reason. On call, I, but when they was coming to my house, they said that I was locking women up and beating them with pistols, which everyone was in my house asleep. And they continue to do it from Christmas Eve, 2019, all the way up to February 3rd, 2000. And they threatened my room... And they threatened my roommates to get out the house after they locked me up. I was locked up on a secular assault charge, which I never did, and I had to stay in jail nine months. And the victim that I posted rape, wrote a statement, reading, "My name is S.B. I live at 575 East Summit. I work as a manager at downtown Beaumont on Park Street. I rent a room from Dana and Mr. Robb, me and my girlfriend Erica Weaver. The Beaumont cops are harassing us, making a fly, saying Mr. Robb is locking women, they're hurting women. I have never seen Mr. Robb hurt or lock women. He has never hurt anyone. He has never hurt me. The cops will not leave us alone. They are harassing us." And I was locked up nine months because of this here. And I had all my furniture stolen out of my house. They took a U-Haul and came and took all of them. So I suffered a great loss and stuff. And right now, you know, I just feel my life with the Beaumont Police Department. When they supposed to be here to protect me, they are harassing me. This lady was living in one of my family's rental house. I didn't convict her because she had too much traffic going there, illegal traffic and stuff. And after I convicted her, I believe her mama had something to do with the police. They don't know if she had dispatch or what, but she started sending them at my house. You know, I was terrified by that, and so I lost a lot doing that. And I mean, it's just, something needs to be done about that, you know? It just don't make no sense, you know? Everybody was sleeping in my house. Nobody was doing anything, nothing illegal. And that's what I wanted to speak on today, and I don't think it was fair. They, you know, they violated my fourth, my eighth, and my fourteen amendments. And they tore my house down. I mean, they ramshack my house, kicking doors in. And like they say, they say they're going to fix it. They never fixed my door or anything. So thank y'all for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
Latasha, no last name and no address.
Mayor Pro Tim, question, does our policy require citizens to write their first and last name and their address when they sign up to speak or maybe a city attorney?
It's mostly for the record. However, we can't deny them opportunity to speak. They can give that information at the podium. That information is just requested so the clerk can accurately, you know, dictate the minutes.
Thank you.
So...
Ms. Latasha.
Ms. Reed, so you're saying when they come to the podium, they should state their first and last name?
If they haven't done so on the slip, yes, sir. And I believe Mr. Benoit did.
Ms. Latasha, if you can state your name and address, first and last name and address for the record.
I don't like when I state my address. I state my name. Just Latasha. And as I mentioned before, I'd rather not say my last name due to privacy concerns and safety concerns.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'm going to call a point of water on this then, because I'll address this to the city attorney. If they're not following our policy, do we have to allow them to speak if they're not following our policies?
I would recommend allowing her to speak, just so that we're not in violation of any First Amendment rights at this time, and I'll research the issue further for you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, just want to make sure she get all her time.
I'll restore, I'll restore it whenever she starts.
All right, thank you.
You ready?
Yes. I'd like to start off by first saying that I am a victim of judicial conduct, misconduct, rather. And there's been a lot of strange things, unethical things, that has happened with my case within the last week or so. I received an email last week on the day of my hearing, which was August the fifteenth, stating that my hearing was canceled or paused. Something about the judge is going to be in a trial up until Friday or whatever. Okay. Then I received another email stating that my motion to transfer venue is going to be decided by another judge in the same courthouse. Now, I put in a motion to transfer venue on the tenth of August. I still haven't gotten the hearing date. But yet, they scheduled a hearing date for my attorney, who I withdrew from like a little over a month ago. He has a hearing already. And that hearing was passed on the fifteenth and in the process of being scheduled. And this other judge who they're trying to take over my case, who was assigned to my case, I've heard some things about him. I'm not going to go into detail. But I requested that my case is transferred to Harris County. The judge continues to ignore my request. He's trying to keep my case in that court because of the leverage I have on them with all the criminal activity that has happened with my case. And my attorney, who I just withdrew from, I'm not going to say his name. I've already mentioned his name last week. I mean, he's never seen anything like this before either in his so many years of practice in law. He even called out the whole court, said the whole court was just flat out racist. Accused them of criminality, extortion, predatory actions, you name it. My house is not a safe environment. As I've mentioned before, my insurance company, they made a payment on my case for the damages to my property, to have it repaired, and also the thirty-eight thousand for my contents that was damaged. My attorney unethically cashed that claim check of thirty-eight thousand dollars, didn't give me anything. His reason for doing so, well, this is what you owe for fees and expenses. I'm like, okay, well, you don't get that till the case settled. The case hadn't settled yet. I even complained to my insurance company. They were like, okay, well, you have to mention that to the defendants. I mentioned it to them. They referred me back to the claim adjuster. I'm like, well, somebody need to get some answers as to why this attorney unethically cashed my claim check and didn't give me anything, and my house is still an unsafe environment. I'm still having to wash dishes in my bathroom, because I don't have a kitchen sink due to the water damage. And this got to stop. If I have to continue to rally and speak to these news outlets, I'm going to do so. And I'm going to expose this whole city.
That's all I have, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you.
Sheree, anything you'd like to say?
No, sir.
Mr. Williams?
Just one note, based upon the comment we got today about the safety of our operations. I'll be talking with some department heads, and as far as like the solid waste routes, we'll be looking at some safety audits. I'll talk with Benji first, and he can give me some feedback on what that means. And of course, I will be climbing in a truck and riding with them in a police car over the next few weeks and just experiencing it myself to see what they go through.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Ms. Bousart? Todd? Mike?
Congratulations to the Houston Astros for clinching the Western Division last night. They're on a roll. Let's keep it going. Thank you.
Councilman Turner?
Yes, this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to do a proclamation on behalf of all of us in the city of Beaumont for National Sicko Cell Awareness Month out here in Beaumont, Texas. A young lady by the name of Ms. Kennedy, she passed away, and her family is doing this in her memory. So I just want to bring awareness that there is Sicko Cell Awareness Month for the month of September. And Mr. Williams, appreciate everything you've done so far. I've been hearing great things from staff as well as citizens, so keep it up.
Councilman Samuel?
I have nothing, man.
Councilman Phil Shaw?
Is today your birthday?
Yes.
I heard a rumor?
Yes.
Just want to say happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
You didn't say how old?
Forty-nine?
No, sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight?
Blessing, man.
Happy birthday.
Come on.
Okay, I just want to say I had the opportunity today to go through the, present a proclamation for a national voter registration date sponsored by Operation One Vote. Councilwoman Bobby Patterson, it was at Jefferson County Courthouse. And also, last night, there was a candidate forum, and they were there with the new voting machines. If you're not familiar, if you get a chance, need to go and look at the new voting machines. Don't wait till the last minute, but just make sure that you do go and vote. Also, happy birthday, Odwin, and happy birthday to you also, Sheree. I know tomorrow is your birthday.
Happy birthday.
Okay, that's all we have for you. Sorry it went so long. And we will now recess to executive session.